Really, nice occasion to have everyone here. I'm sorry we don't have all these seats filled, but we certainly have all the seats filled up here, which is very, very important. So I want to first start by welcoming you to the university and also to thank everybody up here for their willingness to participate in this democratic process. Even though all of them will not win the election, the fact that they come forward and express a willingness to do this makes our community a much better place. So I want to thank each one of you. Before I served as the president here, I actually served as a faculty member at the Muske School at USM. And I taught students a course in democracy. And we read Alex DeTocqueville's Democracy in America. And, you know, he comes to America in 1830, and he sees this wonderful democratic society. And really, what he notices is that democracy takes place at the local level and people willing to take charge of their lives and be active in civic affairs. And that is what everybody here is doing. But he also gives a warning that one of the risks of democracy is that we have the right to withdraw into our private lives. And he kind of gives a warning that if indeed we do withdraw into our private lives and become too busy to be involved in public affairs, that will be a crisis in democracy. And so we have the local election here, and that, I think, is very important in the reviving of democracy. I unfortunately have to make an introduction across campus at an event that we're having tonight on mental health, which is a huge issue in our society and particularly among university students. So I'm not going to be able to stay, but I am very much interested in hearing that second question about the university. So I have my spies in the audience, and they will be taking notes, and I will get a full report. So thank you all very much, and I'll turn it over to JP.
Well, thanks, everybody, for coming. The event is co-hosted by the University of Maine at Farmington and the Franklin County Chamber. So President Joe, thanks again. I'll be going over the format with you tonight. So we're going to have the candidates from all of the five of the districts in Franklin County. And then we will give each of them two minutes to start, to do a quick introduction, and then we'll go right into the question and answer segment. And then each candidate will be asked four to six questions, depending on how long it goes. We want to make sure we have until about eight o'clock, so we kind of judge the time, but we're going to make sure every candidate has the chance to at least, we start a question, and all of them will have a chance to answer it. We're going to do our best effort to rotate back and forth from like each district. So if the person from District Two starts the first question and then reverse it for the next question, so everybody has a fair chance to try to do that. The ground rules, so everybody has two minutes, and then we have a yellow card. And when that yellow card is raised, you have 30 seconds left. And then when there's 10 seconds left, you'll get the red card. And then when you get the red card thrown at you, that means you're out of time, or when the red card goes down. So just wanted to remind everybody that everyone's, all the candidates here have seen these questions. This is not a gotcha event. We're not looking for any sort of mudslinging, so we want to hear your ideas and your opinions. This whole event is intended to inform the voters about your positions and your ideas. So in the interest of time, I would ask you to please hold your applause until the very end of the evening. Again, we're on a tight time schedule, so I'm going to shut up here in just a second. And I'd like to take the time to introduce our two co-moderators, UMF student Senate President Connor Malone and UMF student Carolyn Kinney.
Hi. I am Connor Malone, UMF student Senate President. We're just going to take a quick moment for those who might be unaware of what county commissioners do and their description. County Commissioners are the county's chief elected officials and are elected for a four-year term. Franklin County will be electing five commissioners this year. Each commissioner serves a separate district within the county. They are responsible for the fiscal operations and policy decisions affecting county government. Additional duties include municipal tax abatement, appeals, and hearings on maintenance of town roads. Thank you.
Candidates, you'll have two minutes to introduce yourselves, starting with Mr. Saviano.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to thank the University of Maine at Farmington, the Mount Blue TV, the Daily Bulldog, Chamber of Commerce, Carolyn and Connor for doing this, and the backbone of the whole thing, Angie Leclaire. She was the one who stayed with us through making an extraordinary effort to pull everybody together. JP and Andre, you two were involved in that. For those that don't know me, I'm Tom Saviano. I live in Wilton. I believe when elected as county commissioner for District One, which includes Wilton, Temple, and West Farmington, I can help county government move ahead and be better prepared for the future. I bring years of experience from working 33 years in the forest products industry, 16 years in the main legislature, serving as your senator and as a representative for Wilton and the towns around it, and eight years as a small business owner, the mercantile, and at least 12 years, I'm not sure how many, as a municipal experience, serving as a select person in Wilton. The contacts I've made and the knowledge I've gained will help me achieve a goal to make Franklin County a better place to work, live, and play. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Good evening, and thank you all for coming. I appreciate it, and thank you for sponsoring this. My name's Sven Fowler. I'm running for District Two, and that is the town of Farmington, everything west-east of the Sandy River. And I've lived in this community for 52 years. I came here to college in 1969 and never left. I enjoyed the community very, very much. I had a great education at the University of Maine at Farmington. Started off in mathematics, and then I was a little tired about mathematics, and I had an opportunity to join the experimental college and create my own major. An extraordinary thing happened at Farmington at that time. Students were allowed to move off campus, and when they did, the town exploded with apartments. And so I spent the next two and a half years studying this issue with geography, sociology, economics, and mathematics. It was an extraordinary experience, and it really helped me shape what I did for the rest of my life. I was able to work for 40 years for Western Maine Community Action, an organization that worked to help people work their way out of poverty. It does work in economic development, does work in housing, energy, health, children's services. I was very much in favor of coming tonight because I think that the more the community is involved and understands what a county commissioner does, the better off we all are. I've had an opportunity for the last four years to attend 85% of the meetings. I have learned a great deal, and I'm really pleased, at the turn that the county has taken. My goals really are to work creating a community together that values all perspectives, not just a few, and I plan on leading a bipartisan dialogue about what's best for our future. My specific interests are around boosting the local economy, looking at what climate change has impact on our region and what it's going to have in the future, as well as helping seniors stay as independent as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Schofield?
Thank you very much. I too want to thank the university for having us here this evening and also the chamber. It's a very well-worth process that we're thinking we're going through here. My name is Tom Schofield, and I hope to represent District Three, which is roughly half of Franklin County. It's the western half. It goes against the New Hampshire border all the way to the Canadian border. And I tell everyone, it's roughly 6,000 people and 12,000 Moose. But Moose, I don't think, will know who I am. But I appreciate being here, and one of the things that I feel confident about is that Franklin County is a growing community, and it's, I want to be an advocate for all the people in Franklin County, not just the western part where all the Moose are. I think that we should continue to grow, and we should continue to develop, but we should be careful on how we go about that. And we need to understand that there are needs in this county that need to be addressed. Franklin County is more, one of the concerns that I've had in the past is that Franklin County goes far beyond Farmington and Wilton and Jay. There's a huge area out there, and the Greater Franklin County Chamber, I think, now recognizes that. I'm not sure that they did years ago. I have 30 seconds left, and I just want to say thank you once again, and I appreciate your support in this election. Thank you.
I do apologize for jumping around. So, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity, as stated by everybody else. I'm Eric Johnson, running for District Two. I'm a self-employed dairy farmer, been here for 37 years, working also, spent some time on both sides of the fence. I am in law enforcement. Just kind of want to bring respect, I guess, integrity, and maybe a little bit nervous, but transparency to the process, I guess. And I got to apologize, I'm kind of naive, never really run for office, and trying to learn a lot of things from former county commissioners and see if I can be of benefit. I thank you.
Mr. Carlton?
Thank you for all coming tonight. It's nice to see a good turnout, and again, thank you to the chamber and the university for hosting this. It's a great venue to get all the candidates in front of you. My name is Bob Carlton. I live in Freeman Township, and for those of you who don't know where that is, that's somewhere between Kingfield and Strong. It's one of the unorganized territories. I lived there for quite a while. My wife, Susan, and I lived there. I've raised two sons in Franklin County. My career is in forestry, and I'm currently self-employed as a consulting forester. I sit on the Board of Directors for the Mount Aben Regional Health Center, and I also sit on the Board of Pesticide Control, thanks to Patty Cormier. We'll talk about that later. And I'm currently a county commissioner, and I'm running for reelection. I've served two and a half years, and it's been a whirlwind, an absolute whirlwind. Franklin County has 87 employees, everything from A to Z. And we, it's 21 communities, 16 unorganized territories, and the needs and demands from the north to the south, as Tom said, are huge. I mean, it's just like the state of Maine, the south and the north. So we're balancing, juggling all the time. I like it. I like the people I work with. We've got great employees in Franklin County. And as Tom said, we've got, we need to manage our growth properly because there's a lot of things going on. The big secret is that everybody else has figured out that Franklin County is a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Mr. McGreen?
Thank you, and thank you for the university of sponsoring this event. I appreciate it because very little is known about county government, and the more people that we can influence, the more people we can help, the more people understand exactly what the functions are. Oftentimes, we do things that don't seem necessarily on the up and up, only because of the fact that we do things and then we ask the state for forgiveness if we do the wrong thing. Sometimes, we do the right thing, and it's very well appreciated by those that recognize us. The reason why I'm running for commissioner again is because I believe I have a trusted and proven track record as a county commissioner. I've been very influential and helpful for working with the previous boards. I've been the unknown individual, if you will, that kind of works together with the opposing party. I served with two distinct individuals who were of the other party, and it worked out fine. We were able to come together on a number of issues and to move the county forward. Of course, we have different plans about how we're going to do that, and I would propose that all of our members that are here today, if I'm so lucky to be able to serve with them, can do a wonderful job as well. I think that their experience as selectmen in the various boards is very important because you need that as a basis for an understanding of what county government can do and what you might be able to be supportive of. Now, I've acted as the president for the Maine County Commissioners Association. I've also been a president of the United Paperworkers International Union, and I want to thank the university for giving me 10 seconds to summarize my qualifications. Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Gilbert?
I want to thank, as everybody else has, about letting us come here tonight and share our thoughts on these questions that we're going to be answering here a little later. I'm a Mainer, lived in Chisholm, I don't know, right here in Jay, all my life. Worked in the paper mill until about a year ago, until Pixel shut down. Had 39 years of time there and have got married, had three kids, three grandchildren. And I kind of want to, you know, one of the reasons is to do, kind of get involved in this is that we have a heritage and a legacy for the future. And that's why I want to leave my kids with, with a place, and of course, I call them kids, they're grown adults, but they're the kids and grandchildren, but a place that they can be proud of, a place that they're willing to stay and help out in this area, this region for the future. I mean, there's, to me, there's a lot of, lot of positive things, and that's the thing, one thing about people, if we can get together and work together, you can accomplish great things. And that's what I'd like to do in the future here, if I'm... And that's what I'd like to do in the future here, if I'm able to serve, and that's, I should have told you, District Five, which is Jay and Chesterville. But just want to say thank you again, and just for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thanks.
All right, beginning with the first question. In what ways can the county commissioners collaborate with the chamber to support local businesses and promote growth? Please give two examples, starting with Mr. Savviallo.
Thank you, Caroline. Does, when you get to the five-second thing, does the floor open too? So, in my personal opinion, I believe the county right now operates in silos. So we have the Chamber of Commerce in their silo, we have Franklin Development Corporation in their silo, UMF in their silo, and the county commissioners in their silo. Those silos need to come down. We're too small to operate in silos. So if we really want to change, this is the beginning of that concept. So as a county commissioner, the two recommendations, and I actually have a third to start, is one, as county commissioners and the county, we need to join the Chamber of Commerce. We need to have a commissioner serve on as a board member. And I'll give you the third, I would ask the chamber to come at least once every six months to update the county commissioners, what's going on, and how we, as county commissioners, can help. And for all the things that I outlined in the beginning, that's a similar theme that I'll carry through this conversation. If we're going to move forward, we've all got to come together. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
I agree with Tom. You know, great partnerships begin when people get together and work together and actually know each other on a first-name basis. And with that, the two suggestions I have is that the Chamber of Commerce, every time they have an open house or a business after-hours event, that they invite the county commissioner from that district where that business is located. So they're at the table, and they get to meet their neighbors and get to see what's happening more in their community. Businesses are changing so radically in our area. We have new ones every day, and it really helps the people see up to, pay up to speed when they see their own neighbors doing something. The second thing I would encourage the chamber to do is encourage their members to be an active part of the strategic plan that's being created by the county commissioners right now. That's going to be the plan for the future, and they need strong input from the business community. And anything you can do to encourage them to do that participation, I appreciate. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
So, I believe, and it's my understanding, that the county has created a strategic planning mechanism right now, and I think it's in place, and I think that that's probably a start to bring maybe the local community and the business together and stuff, and I would be in favor of promoting that more and doing more. I just got to, and I think, you know, we, as county commissioners, can maybe reach out and start to hear matters and bring it together. I think we have the ability also, maybe, to work with state and federal legislators and be an advocate for the Chamber of Commerce and stuff, and see if we can help in those situations. I'm in business myself, and I think we got to do more in these times, and I think there's some issues that need to be addressed, and some of that's rules and regulations and cost, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Schofield?
Thank you for that question. It's been mentioned a couple of times that I think that the county has certain restrictions about what it can do, but one thing it can always do is listen, and I think the chamber should take it upon themselves to be in contact with the county commissioners. I think that we, the county commissioners, can be an advocate for the chamber. I also think the county can be a source of support by maintaining an open line of communication. And communication, as we all know, goes both ways, and I think the chamber should, I would encourage the chamber to keep abreast of the county's concerns. As has been mentioned here before, there's a strategic planning program going on right now, and it would be helpful if the chamber were to be engaged in that, perhaps more than they have been. This will help address the county's concerns, and through that process, we can investigate ways to improve conditions that currently exist and hopefully move our county into a better place for the future. Those are the things I think we can do to help the chamber, and the chamber, I think, can help the county as well. The county commissioners are not legislators. They are more like city councilors. They have certain things that they can and cannot do, but one thing we can always be is an advocate for all of the people and all of the agencies in Franklin County. Thank you.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but the first note I had on this question was, join the chamber. This summer, there was an event at the Hospital of Breakfast, and Bob Berry spoke, and I went, and I was blown away. It was, you know, I'm a huge Bob Berry fan, but he just did it again, and we asked him to speak at another event recently. So, yes, I think absolutely we should be part of the chamber. And I like what Tom said, you know, the silos, you know, we're all operating, the more we come together, the more we accomplish, hands down, no questions about it. One of the examples, and it doesn't necessarily apply to the chamber, but it's helped growth tremendously in this county, is broadband through Greater Franklin Economic Development. Ninety-six percent of this county now is hooked up to fiber, or has the ability to hook up to fiber. That happened over a period of time. The county has partnered up with them, with Greater Franklin on some of this stuff, especially in UTs. We have to be very careful how funds that we use through the TIF that we have in the unorganized territories is used, but that's been a huge boost for development throughout the county as far as, you know, home purchases. I mean, people aren't, people come in, they want to buy a home, they want to work from home, they don't have internet, see you later. So we've had a lot. But we will join the chamber. Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert?
It's probably going to sound like a record that keeps playing, but, you know, that's what I had to develop conversations and relationships with the chamber, understanding their needs, understanding what they're coming against. If you don't have relationships, if you don't have those conversations, that you'll never move forward, you'll never know what, you know, you may have something that would benefit one group, and the other one has something to benefit you. So if you're not talking, it's never going to happen, but those are things that, to me, would move forward in the chamber. And also be an advocate for plans that would help overcome these hindrances. And another one, Bob just mentioned, it was a Franklin County development with Charlie. I mean, I've talked to Charlie on some, a few things, and one was childcare, if you remember about what the issues are in this county. And we strategized on the thing that we had talked about, and we haven't got back together on it, but those are the types of contacts that are important to move this county forward. And, you know, as we go forward, you know, those are things that, you know, we need to be together as a community, and the community needs to work together, and that's all aspects from business to the individuals, so thank you.
Mr. McGreen?
I've given this a lot of thought, but to be perfectly honest with you, I couldn't come up with two reasons why we want to be collaborative with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not opposed to the Chamber of Commerce. I think it's a very worthwhile organization. It's just that I don't know as if it should be a function of county government to collaborate with the chamber. We do enough collaboration with a lot of other governmental entities, and that is our role and our purpose. We can be supportive of issues like Eggs and Issues Breakfast, where the chamber get together, have breakfast, talk about issues that are concerning them, things that perhaps we can do at that level. And I think what we can do as a county is to be an advocate and to encourage small business. As most of you know, small businesses here in Franklin County are the backbone of our economy. In Jay, we've lost two paper mills, and we've been devastated by that. So we understand the need to increase the visibility of small businesses and to encourage for small businesses. But I'm not necessarily bought on the idea that we collaborate with the chamber, because the county is developing a strategic plan, and I don't see anything in there that says we need to have these kinds of collaborations with outside public entity, private entities. With public entities, I agree, we need to have that. So I would like to see that the chamber, as had been previously suggested, to report once in a while to the commissioners and let us know what their desires are and see what we can do to help. Thank you.
The second question for the night is, as the only university in Western Maine, UMF plays a huge role as an employer and economic multiplier in the region by contributing thirty million dollars to the region each year. It has a long history of working with school districts to prepare and mentor young teachers. Providing school districts with quality teachers and retaining them has become a big problem in Maine, particularly in rural areas. What steps will you take to support the university? What resources might you be willing to secure to assist the university and the community in addressing this urgent need? Mr. Savviallo?
Thank you, Connor. First and foremost, I agree with the opening statement in this question. UMF is key to the community's economic well-being. By the way, my son did graduate from UMF. Had to do an extra semester because he went to Australia and majored in everything except academics. It's one of the silos that I mentioned and talked about that needs to be broken down. I say this as a small business owner in the community and as a citizen of this area. I already tried where I can. I have successfully brought members of the congressional delegation to meet with the president. I've successfully brought the university trustees that I know personally to meet with him. And also importantly, and he's not here tonight, I've been working with Brian Ellis from the president's office to help newly established veterans program. We have thirty-five veterans that will be attending here this year, that are attending here. That's because of one individual's effort to bring them in and welcome them. I'm a veteran myself. I'm a first lieutenant retired, honorably discharged, believe it or not, and a third-generation military family. I'm particularly proud of this effort. The things that I could do, one, is again, I think there's a board of visitors, there's no reason why the county commissioner should not be on that, and I would work to have that established, working with the governor. I'd be willing to go to Augusta to testify on UMF's behalf. I've talked to Joe about that. And I'd give you a third, I would ask the president of the university to come in October and in February to tell us what's going on and how we can help. This in addition to the other things I've already done. UMF is key to this community, and it needs the county's support. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
You know, this event is a perfect example of what happens when a variety of partners pull together and sponsor something collectively. We have more participation than we would if an individual organization did it. We have more interest, we have greater credibility. And this is what happens when collectively the university works with a wide variety of partners. Last Thursday, there was an event at Emory Center, and it was a concert to get out the vote, and our governor spoke, and our governor spoke about a twenty-five-million-dollar bond issue that we're all going to vote on. And then she said, "And there's money there from UMF if they want us to go after it." And I'm thinking to myself, what is it that UMF could do with the community that would take a collection of a variety of interests and a variety of people together to work to create an opportunity like this? It's R and D, research and development. Can it really work towards helping us with one of our common problems? Will we all decide what it is? I think there's an opportunity there. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
So like everyone, I think the college is a, it's a big plus. It's a benefit for the community, and I'm an advocate of education. I think we all need it, and I think we got to continue to learn every day. I directly benefit from the college and the aspect of agriculture, and I work with the extension offices and stuff like that, so that truly benefits me. We receive a lot of monies from the student population and things in our local business, so I'd like to be an advocate, and I, you know, stand up and help them, and that's the best I can give you. Thank you.
Mr. Schofield?
I believe that we are truly blessed to have this university in our county, and it's a great way to keep and retain young people in Franklin County by having this university here. I think studies have shown that many students who come here, who learn here, often find, fall in love with the area and actually stay here. Without this, though, those opportunities wouldn't exist. I think the university and the county should attempt to determine areas where it would prove beneficial to both parties to enter into collaborations in order to determine common goals and objectives. Some of the folks here tonight have mentioned that, the use of these facilities, for instance. The university should be encouraged to identify those potential resources and the county, that the county may have available that might legitimately be utilized to address the needs of the university. The county commissioner's office is just up the road, and last I checked, it's the same distance between here and there, and there and here. And I think the university should attempt to maybe be, I'll put it back onto them a little bit, that they should attempt to work closer with the county commissioners and be an advocate for the county, and it would be reciprocal. Thank you very much.
Mr. Carlton?
I'd like everyone else to realize the value of the university. It's right here, it's, when you come into town, that's what you see, is the university, first thing you see when you come into Farmington. And I just want to elaborate, you've talked about students that come and get educated and love it. Here's proof right here, right? How many years ago?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. He's still here, so. This is a tough question for me because it says, what resources might you be willing to secure? Now, resources is an open-ended question. The county is limited to what they can do financially, a lot of that by statute. We get requests all the time to fund everything from A to Z. One thing that we do right now, the county does through our TIF program, is that we have a scholarship program, and that's in the unorganized territories. Any student that is going on to any type of workforce training or secondary education can apply for a grant. And we have funded many, many students from the UT to come for their education. We currently have a woman from Madrid who is being almost partially, am I right? She's funded a hundred percent, and she's attending school here right now in secondary education, and I was in And I was in a meeting in Madrid last week, and she was boasting that, she says, "When I get done, when I get my degree, I'm going up to Phillips, and I'm going to be a teacher in Phillips." So that is a success, and that's something that the county's doing already. Now, we fund a lot of students, but they don't all come here, so, that's it. Thanks.
One of my, my daughter came here, did a four-year stint. She actually got a grant, a scholarship from the Mitchell Fund, so, and she's become a human resource person, actually for a place in DC, and then she just got done, and she's working for a engineering firm. And so it's important to the people around this area, you know? And, you know, some of the problem that, you know, reading, you know, seeing this, the question is, how do we retain these young people? How do we keep them here? And, you know, with today's technology, can we, you know, are we networking enough? You know, is that some, is the university networking with the schools? Are the schools networking with the universities? Are we getting all the people we needed involved to make this happen? And, you know, in getting outside help, there's, you know, I know universities have donors and all that, but, you know, the money need to, it's a big place, it generates a lot of revenue, but there's opportunities that if we can find those resources to help support the university and keeping these kids here, you know, we've got to sell, you've got to sell something. I remember, I used to work for Agway, my father-in-law, and we had sales, and it takes $400. And that shows you how far back I'm going here, $400 to get somebody in. And if something happens, or they just, you know, didn't like the place, it costs you $800 to $900 to get them back. So if we can get these kids at an early age and involved and networking and understanding how great of an area Franklin County is, it would give them the desire to stay here. It's hard, because what-
That would be time, sorry to interrupt you. I didn't want to interrupt you mid-sentence, but that is time for you, thank you very much.
Oh, I didn't even see the flag. Sorry.
No worries, no worries. Mr. McGreen.
This is a very complicated issue, University of Maine, and what we can do to provide resources. I'm a product of the University of Maine. I graduated from the University of Maine in Augusta, went on to get my master's degree from the University in Oro. This particular campus, I took courses now and again, and what I saw happening to the teachers' college here at the university was very disheartening to me, because of the fact that most of the teachers that I know that came from this institution have gone on to be wonderful teachers, wonderful individuals in our community. The problem is, as far as I can see, is a lot of people are not being compensated enough. As teachers, as professors, I think there should be better resources available, and so I would advocate that perhaps going to the state of Maine and getting some of those resources available for the university. In particular, I work with the Maine Education Association Retired Group, and of that, we're all retired teachers. And we're having difficulties paying our light bills, our phone bills, our internet connections, and medicines and what have you, because there's a thing called WEP and GPO, which is an offset. If you make any social security income, if you make any part of the Maine PERS system, you get a reduction in your benefits. And I think teachers are starting to realize that, you know, there's a better life for me out there rather than being a teacher. I'd love to see teachers be progressive and to be event resources of the community, but you've got to pay them their due diligence and they're compensated properly. Thank you.
The third question. How do you distinguish between government spending and investment? What are your guidelines or criteria supporting government programs that might help small businesses or nonprofits, but also cost the taxpayer money? Starting with Mr. Saviano.
Of the questions that are there, this and the road question, I found pretty interesting to make me think a little bit. So to me, government spending includes roads, bridges, snow plowing, jail operations, and police protection. And by the way, I'm proud to have the endorsement of the county sheriff. Back in my early days, and Bob would remember this, I would call these capital expenditures. These are the things we knew to run county business. If that's all the money we had, no money extra, that's what we have to do. Investments, to me, are those things we do for the people that live here. These include properly managing the relief act funds, thank you Sue Pratt, you've done a phenomenal job for that, I appreciate that, the TIF monies, and I know Bob's been involved in that, the opioid dollars, that we've just reestablished the committee. And I expect we'll see more of these kind of funds come into this county, because we represent the whole state instead of going to the towns. It also includes funding the nonprofits that help the people in Franklin County so they can thrive in living in this beautiful place we call home. Investments also include investing in the people who work for the county. As Bob said, there's 83 or four of them, right? Eighty-seven, thank you. But let me address the elephant in the room. I've always supported nonprofits as a selectman. I wanted their request moved to the county level, and worked hard to make that happen. I know Wilton citizens have made that request through their own town warrant, and I believe Farmington has done the same thing. Let me make clear, it's not a blank check, it simply says, "We have criteria that has to be met and understood." This might include how many county residents are served. What's the percent of the request as part of their overall budget? What's their overhead? Are there employees that work for them that live here? And is there other funding available that we can multiply the money that we might provide these? These are important. Government spending supports the infrastructure and protection, investment is in the people who work, live, and play here. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler.
I look at our tax expenditures over the long term in two ways. What's the return on investment? And what's the potentially could happen if we didn't make that investment? I have a slide at fenfowler.com that might be of interest to you. It is a slide that looks from the citizens of Farmington's perspective, with the average house of 25, a tax of $25,000, $2,500, and where that money goes. It goes to municipalities, it goes to schools, it goes to the county. And I have a second slide that shows where the money comes from, which towns pay the most. In that slide, 6% of your property tax dollars go to support the town, the county. In the average tax in Farmington of $2,500, that works out to be $150. Of that $150, $51 goes to support the jail, 49 goes to support sheriff's department, the remaining of that money goes to support the other departments, plus seven nonprofits that the county does support. In the case of the jail and the other services, what would happen if we didn't have them? What's a potential danger? In the case of nonprofits, what's the return on investment? These seven nonprofits provided extraordinary services to our county to help seniors be independent in their own homes, through nursing care in their homes, through rides, medical rides, through repairs in their homes, help in understanding the internet. And at the same time, this, these nonprofits ended up raising over $10 million to help deliver these services in Franklin County. That's a pretty good return on investment. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
I believe government spending and investment can be probably combined if it's done correct. I think it has to be done with transparency, and it has to be with accountability when you have expenditures, and I'm all in favor for spending if you're going to get the return on investment that he mentions, and I think you can do that in many ways. You know, as a small business owner, there's some things that you have to look at. I look at regulations and taxes, and some, what are the benefits and what are going to be the not benefits if I want to have growth? And I think, I apologize, I'm not a public speaker, maybe that's a class I should take. I guess major concerns, every day, we have a median age that's going up in the community, it averages around 46.3 years. I have concerns that you have an elderly population that is coming about, it's harder when you're on fixed incomes and things like that. When we have to be concerned about our tax bases, he did mention 6% of our taxes does go, but as a large end donor, you know, when you pay upwards to $50,000, that's a substantial amount. And so I think we just need to maybe focus more on accountability and transparency.
Mr. Schofield.
I think, I think the honorable Tom Saviano said it very well in his opening remarks regarding this question. I think, I agree that county spending is distributing funds for operational needs, and the daily cost of doing business and keeping the county departments going in an effective and efficient manner. In other words, keeping the store open, that's what your spending is. Your investment is spending money to improve the long-term conditions, which will likely reduce the operational needs. The old saying, "A stitch in time saves nine," is very, very, very accurate. If we can invest in things that will, down the road, save us money in the long term, that is a good investment. All of the folks here have said that in one way or another, and I wholeheartedly agree with it. We have ways that we can do that, and we should make sure that we're thinking long-term whenever we're in that position. Thank you.
Mr. Carlton.
I look at government spending as our budget. It's what we spend, like Yoda said, to run the business, to, it's the tax base, what goes out. One thing that we are extremely active at the county level, and most people don't realize this, is we're chasing grants nonstop. Sue Pratt has done an exceptional job chasing, helped us chase grants. The sheriff's department is always looking for more money to help invest in things like cops, cops program, bring a partial payment of an additional officer. So these are, these are things that we're chasing all the time, so that's not a cost to the taxpayer. We've got our opa money that were, was $5.8 million, we've allocated $5 million of it, so we're getting down to the wire. And those are things that we, that I look at as investments. We're investing in a whole bunch of different projects throughout the county. People have applied, we funded some, we had to fund some infrastructure things. Tom mentioned the opioid funds, that's an investment. We're investing in treatment, prevention, care for the scourge of opioids. And if you don't think it's not here, it's here. It's 90% of everybody that goes to the jail can be tied to opioids. So that's, that's another discussion, another day. And it's extremely important, you know, we're talking about taxes all the time. I mean, as the three commissioners, you know, we're looking at it all the time. How can we keep it reasonable? You know, you have to grow salaries and people and so on and so forth, but it's, it's a balancing act. Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert.
I think as, you know, everybody shared here, with the investment and, you know, the government spending and all that, but I think in doing all this, I think it's important for everybody to have a plan. You know, if you don't have that plan to have the foresight to, you know, A, B, C, and D, and what's the payout of those things, you know, what good is us spending that money? And it comes right down to planning and understanding what that money's being spent for, how it's going to change the county, how it's going to change people's lives. It's like Bob talked about the opioid thing. I think Maine is, you know, I know probably last year, they were well over, pretty close to 1,000 deaths, and, you know, how are we implementing things, and how are we planning in our budgets or our investments to take care of these things, or head them off and change them to a better situation that eliminates those things? And I really, when it comes right down, what, planning is quite a big thing in the guidelines, criteria of how to make things succeed, so, thanks.
Mr. McGreen.
For me, it's pretty easy to distinguish between government expenditures and investment, because if you look at county government, the expenses that we have or our spending is on jails, probate, sheriff, admin, deeds, dispatch, et cetera. Those are the essential items that we spend money on as a county commissioner. The investment is with people and nonprofit organizations. When you invest in nonprofits and you invest in people, you get a return on an investment. You don't necessarily get a return on the other items that I just mentioned. And the important part about the nonprofits is criteria, as you'd like to know what it would be, is, and we did it successfully for a number of years. You had three basic positions that you had to, had to, first of all, agree that if you borrowed money, took money from the county, you wouldn't take it from any of the other communities. You wouldn't ask the other communities, because you would get the lion's share, what you need to run your program through the county. The second thing is those funds that you get from the county as taxpayers' dollars. And you need to understand that those monies have got to be reinvested in the county. So you don't take the county tax dollars and move them to another county and help benefit those individuals, you do it here in Franklin County. And the third thing is, we need the support of the communities. And as commissioners, we used to require that at least 60%, which is more than a lion's share, had to agree that if the county's going to fund these programs and invest in the people in the county, that those communities have to agree to have that done, or we wouldn't do it. Thank you.
So, moving into question four, what are two ideas you have for moving our region forward to meet the challenges of both today and tomorrow? Mr. Saviano.
So I'll be short and sweet. As I said, we've got to open the silos. I mentioned this before. This is the silos of county government, the hospital, UMF, Franklin Economic Development, Franklin Chamber. We need to collaborate and work together in this county. Long ago, when I used to teach leadership and team building, I learned the difference between one mind working by itself and two or three. We used to say one plus one equals three. Think about it, when you have a job and you're doing it by yourself, and all of a sudden somebody shows up to help you pick apples, it goes a lot faster and a lot quicker. And if we all come together and collaborate, the gain will be exponential. That's one thing. The second is, I think we need to make our tax dollars and use them effectively and efficiently, and make sure those that are in need get to help to thrive in our community. So my goal, to summarize, breaking the silos down, using tax dollars wisely, and investing in the people.
Mr. Fowler. Mr. Fowler?
We've got a great county here. We have safe communities, we have a pristine environment, we have wonderful natural resources, and people are moving here because of that. If you go up north and look at how many second homes have been built, how many people have moved in for a short period of time because of what we have here. We're one of the safest, most affordable communities in the state of Maine. Now that we have broadband, it reaches almost all of those homes, can we encourage those people that are there seasonably to stay a little bit longer? Is there a way that we can create amenities so that they're around and spending their money, their money over a longer period of time? Can they bring some of the resources that you used to have at their full-time home back here to Franklin County? I think we have an extraordinary opportunity in doing that. We really do have to work all together to be able to understand what are those amenities that we need to invest in? What is it that we would like from those people? And then how do we somehow pull all of our resources together in one fashion to be able to create that? Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, I think we have to continue to invest in the infrastructure such as the county's doing. I think you hear a lot of constituents talking about roads and things like that. I think they're a vital asset and need to see what we can do to make them better. There seems to be some deficiencies pointed out to me. I think you have to go after your current businesses that you have, ask what we can do to help and provide better means to them, and maybe to entice other businesses to come in. Other people have mentioned broadbands here, there's some other technology I think that we have to look into that will be beneficial. My second thing would be to continue to invest in, you know, the emergency services and things like that. Concerns with some of the storms you see lately and some that we've had here in the past, to make sure that we have like EMA up to speed and that they're able to work with the communities and provide some better services there to get us back going.
Mr. Schofield?
I think county commissioners should be advocates in championing Franklin County. I think they should utilize their bully pulpit to promote all of Franklin County. Developing a strategic plan and utilizing that plan is key to accomplishing this. Right now, the current Board of County Commissioners had the foresight and the wisdom to put together a group to start formulating a strategic plan for Franklin County. This is the first county in the state of Maine to endeavor such a, to, to do this endeavor. No other county's doing this. Some people would say, "Well, you know, why did, why did you think you had to break the ice?" We, we agree, I think, that Franklin County's an important part of our state, and why not us first? We're gonna make some mistakes, we're probably gonna have to tweak it and change it, and the next Board of County Commissioners will probably have the ability to do that. But I think it's important to begin the process now, and I'm firmly in favor of it. That is one key role in getting our county moving again in the right direction and keeping it going in that way. So county government is underrated, in my view, and I think we can do better. Thank you.
Mr. Carlton?
Again, the broken record. Strategic plan, first and foremost. When I ran two years ago, one of my issues was, what do we do? We just show up and we deal with the problems? And it's at that point, I campaigned on it, we need to have a strategic plan, we need to have a direction that we're going in, first and foremost. To move forward, we have to deal with the problems we have. And as I said earlier, the opioid scourge is alive and well in Franklin County, so we have to continue to, we've got, as Tom said, you know, Franklin County's a leader, we're a leader. We're the only county in the state of Maine that has an opioid committee that's active and working. Ryan Close, big part of that, thank you, Ryan. We continue to go after the grants, we go after every nickel we can to fund all these extra programs. And the more, the longer we go, the more we get, the more we do, we're gonna continue to be a leader in Franklin County. Eric had talked about infrastructure. And our infrastructure, we can't ignore it. We can fund everything else, but we have to take care of what we have here. Our buildings, our roads, our bridges, they have to be brought back because they've been neglected over the years. No question they've been neglected. So again, back to the strategic plan, when we have five, I think we'll be able to, to wrap our hands around it and start to move forward. And to go back what Tom said earlier, break down the silos. There's no question that, you know, the more we break down the silos, the more we'll get done, and we'll all work together.
Mr. Gilbert?
I'm gonna mention the same Franklin County plan, so, but that plan's important because in that plan, it is the future. You set priorities in that plan, you set goals in those plans, and then you can come back to that plan every year, or however you want to as you plan your budgets for, for the fall, future. And it just makes, keeps you on course to make this county a thriving county again. I'll just share, this is probably old time, but I, when I was young, there was two paper mills, there was five or six shoe shops, there was foster manufacturing, and then it all left. And now we have to rebuild that. And this, this plan is an opportunity for us to do that. And as, also connecting with, with, with the community on what's hindering them, what, as my son told me, says, "What's causing pain?" You know, what's, what's stopping the growth in this area? How can we, how can we change that, those things that we can make it easier for, for people to keep workers here, have the workforce you need? And just try to eliminate those difficulties. Thanks.
Mr. McGreen?
Boy, I'll tell you, when you ask the two ideas, that's, that's a stretch, really is. I mean, I, I think of probably a hundred different ways to, to answer that question, but I come down to the basic premise that if we invest in people, if we invest in organizations, that would reduce the, the lion's share of the county taxes. And the lion's share of the county taxes go to the Sheriff's Department, Patrol, Dispatch, and the jail. I remember LD-1 coming at the forefront here in Franklin County, and that restricted the amount of money that you could raise on an annual basis, which made a lot of sense, but yet it was very restrictive, but yet it gave people an opportunity to think of different ways in order to save money, reduce, reduce costs. So I think, in all honesty, providing people with a helping hand to invest in programs that help people get themselves out of poverty or restrictions, I think that's what we need to do to, to move the county forward, to be real progressive in that idea, is to provide opportunities for people. And the University of Maine can do that. Also, the Local Workforce Investment Board can do that. You don't necessarily have to have people get a job, you need to get a job, you need to show where you can get, if you can get more education and you can better yourself, you will pull this county forward in a regional manner that I don't think anybody's ever seen before.
Moving on to question five. What tools available to you as a commissioner will you use to improve and maintain the roads of Franklin County? Starting with Mr. Saviallo.
Bob has a tractor with a rock rake on it, so that's one thing, we're gonna put him to work out there to do that. I know you have. Today, if I understand correctly, in the past, a road supervisor did all the work without much oversight. Now, the county administrator, who has become the UT manager, reviews the work with the road supervisor, or any projects over ten thousand dollars go out to bid. That's a good thing. Is there an emergency, if there's an emergency, which sadly we've seen too many of last couple of years, the solution to that emergency is brought to the commissioners, and they can make recommendations on how to fix the problems. I also understand there's a five-year plan that's being developed for the commissioners to approve hopefully in January. This is good, and I wanna change that. The only thing I think, two things, is one, there needs to be better transparency with how these roads have been chosen. In Wilton, we set up a road committee, and we got them to immediately say, "Not my road first," but to have a real look at what the town was trying to do to make that happen. Perhaps that's not possible because of the UT being as large as it has, but we need to find a way to make sure that the process of choosing those roads in the five-year plan has got good public scrutiny and transparency. The other one I would suggest, with or without a committee, we need to let the plans around the surrounding towns near the unorganized territories see what we're doing, because maybe there's some synergies there that can reduce the overall cost through efficiencies of operations and pair, repairs. If you want, this is part of my plan, to break down the municipal silo. I do believe what we've got is very good, and there's just some transparency issues that we need to work on, and I thank the county commissioners for doing that right now. And Bob, I look forward to riding with you on your tractor.
Mr. Fowler?
I know absolutely nothing about this subject. I spent over forty minutes yesterday at a county commissioner meeting while they were having a discussion about this. It was fifty pages of engineering notes, and there was an extraordinary conversation that, from people that knew a lot more than I did. I second what Tom said, and I'm sure everybody else here can add to that.
Mr. Johnson?
So I believe we just continue to get, you know, state, local funding and federal monies and stuff. I think it's, I get a lot of calls, I guess, and people are concerned with the conditions in their vehicles and things like that, so I think it needs to be addressed. I used to plow the county road way back, and I had some questions that I haven't got the answer to, because I believe some of the roads that we do plow and maintain are state roads, and I would like to maybe visit that more because I think that might be a burden to the county when it should actually be to the state. Just kinda investigate that more. Again, I have to apologize, I'm naive to this, and need to do more investigation to figure it all out.
Mr. Schofield?
I think there's a lot of sometimes misconception of what the county is responsible for. The county is responsible for a number of roads and bridges throughout Franklin County, all within the unorganized townships. And there should be an inventory of all the roads, which I think there is, a pretty good inventory, but that inventory should not just include the number of miles and the location, it should include the status of the roads, their, their repair schedules. I think we might be able to do a better job with that going forward. A long-term plan should be to, to, to replace, to put in place in order to address maintenance and repair needs for the long term. The county show, the county should also be an advocate for the roads it is not directly responsible for. I think the county commissioners can use their position to advocate for roads throughout the county that perhaps the state maintains. And I think they should work with the state on those roads, not for financial, not with their financial support, but with their advocacy. There's a number of issues that we can use, and I think that you need to understand what roads need what, prioritize them, and that's where we need to be. Thank you.
Mr. Carlton?
This subject is near and dear to my heart, as the only commissioner that lives in the unorganized territory and lives on a UT road. It's why I got involved in county politics. And Tom's right, I do have a tractor with a rock rake, and when we could not get home, we couldn't get a school bus, fire truck, ambulance to the road, I went in front of the commissioners and had a bad spell. Fixes were made, so let's fast forward. We currently, we just recently hired a professional engineer who's now our road supervisor, who's doing a great job. He started in June, and he's playing catch-up. We are in the process of redoing that inventory, and the inventory will be total miles, miles gravel, miles pavement, bridges, large culverts that, that need replacing. We've got a lot of catch-up work to do on, on the roads. And that inventory will take us to develop the plan. And the plan will be a short-term plan and a long-term plan. And those plans, as we know, what happened last year, can change on a heartbeat, and overnight. And we do have a road committee. It's, it'll be the five commissioners. To do, to, to put a committee together to, to come up with road issues, it's, it's very complicated because it's spread out so far, and we go from Langtown to Washington Plantation and everything in between. And you're right, Eric, there are some roads that we plow that are state roads, but I don't know how that works, to be honest with you, I'm gonna be truthful. So, yeah, yeah, exactly. I think our roads are way better than they were, I know they are. We've, we've invested a lot of money into some things. As Fenn said yesterday, we talked about bridges, and we're gonna spend over a million dollars to replace a bridge in Madrid that's been neglected for many, many years, so, a lot of work to do there, but we're making progress.
Mr. Gilbert?
As I read this question, I was, you know, I, I thought of it in a different way, that I, I thought as the whole county roads, you know, you go on some of these back roads, they're pretty rough, and, you know, some of the smaller towns don't have the revenue to fix those roads, or as fast as they should. And, you know, I, I was thinking, you know, basically as, as a county, we can't, you know, we're limited with the budget on what we can do for highways. I mean, we take care of the, you know, like they said, the unorganized territories, but somehow that we could be an advocate for towns, maybe, working with the state and the House and the Senate leaders, to try to advocate money, funds for these towns that are having a harder time. You know, traveling around a little bit, it, some of them are pretty rough, and, and, these towns are small, so how do you, how do they overcome the, the cost of what, what's out there for a tire? But I, I'd like to see us be more of an advocate for those, those towns, because, you know, we're all together, and somehow to help those people with better roads would be, would be a, a major improvement for their lives. I mean, we drive on, you, you put a pothole in the middle of the road, and, you know, you, you go by that five or six times, and, you know, you, you, you get tired of it, and it doesn't matter where it is, but these people are, I think are faced with some, your smaller towns are faced with some more hardships on those things.
Mr. McGreen?
Well, first of all, there is three kinds of roads in Franklin County. There's state aid roads, which would be Route sixteen, twenty-seven, four, two, one thirty-three, and I'm sure there are others that I've, I've left out. But then there are also town roads, which is a responsibility basically for the towns to take care of and maintain in their organized community. And then there are the unorganized territory roads that the county commissioners act as a selectmen for the maintenance and, and prevention of, you know, washouts and things of that nature. So there's three different aspects to it. And the way to improve the county's roads, I believe, is through a budget process. Every year, annually, the commissioners review the roads, I don't know if they do it physically anymore, but we used to, go around and see exactly what roads needed to be repaired, how much money did we want to invest? And then we look at where we're gonna get that money. In the unorganized territories or townships, we have to assess those individual community, well, not communities, but townships, for monies in order to make those improvements. well, not communities, but townships for monies in order to make those improvements. So the thing is, we do a wonderful job in Franklin County of maintaining those roads. Unfortunately, what we haven't been doing is building back better. As you all know, climate change is upon us, and because it is, a lot of these roads that we've made improvements on are gonna be washed out, maybe next year, next summer, maybe this winter. We need to look forward in foresight and start doing a little bit more riprapping, bigger culverts, things of that nature. And that's how I think we can improve the county roads in Franklin County.
And we'll be moving to question six. A lot of elected officials take the time to say that they are not a politician. Do you accept the title of politician, and what aspects of your service might help to restore trust in government? Mr. Saviallo.
So clearly, I hate the word, but, and some people wonder why I'm doing this if I hate the word politician. Webster defines politicians as people who participate in policymaking. In Augusta, sadly, I would have to say I was a politician, because we were making laws and setting policy. However, we were not the enactors of what was required in those laws, so I have to reluctantly accept that term for my work down there. Policies that are then down there are given to departments to interpret, write the rules on how they were gonna be filed, and make sure they were complied with. The key at the county level is that they are politicians because they set the policy. However, they are the enactors. They're the ones who set the budget, set the rules, and enact them and enforce them. We can restore trust in the government by setting the policies, managing the budget, establishing the rules and enforcing them in a transparent and consistent way. We need to be available and present to the public for any questions or concerns they have. We need to operate in the light. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler.
I always enjoy following Tom. I can just say ditto. But I think one of the things that you've got to understand is how far the county has come. The county four years ago really had a very bad, bad reputation for being closed, doing things behind what we thought were closed doors. In that, in the last four years, some extraordinary changes have taken place. They've hired an outside administrator. Every meeting that you have, you can watch on TV. And you can watch it through V line TV live, you can watch it through Zoom, or you can go online and watch it a week or two weeks later. You can ask for the minutes. You can actually see what the agenda item is before the meeting and see the material that's handed to the commissioners before. That's building integrity, that's building trust, and that's making it easier to be a politician as a Franklin County commissioner.
Mr. Johnson.
Well, as you can clearly all tell, I'm not a politician, but if I am elected, I'm willing to wear that cap. The only thing, again, I'd bring back is transparency, integrity, and respect, and maybe a little farmer's common sense. And I want to thank you again for the opportunity.
Mr. Schofield.
Unfortunately, the word politician has had a negative note to it. And that is because we've had a lot of politicians who deserve to be negatively thought of. But a politician is a person who professionally is involved in politics, especially as a holder of or candidate for elected office. A person experienced in the art or science of government, especially one actively engaged in conducting the business of government. What's wrong with that? So I think that we need to be careful when we think of the word politician. Lawyers get a bad rap, some deservedly so. Car salesmen get a bad rap, some deservedly so. But just because you are a lawyer or an attorney or someone who sells cars does not mean you're dishonest, that you're inept, that you're in it for self-serving reasons. And I think in this state of Maine, we are blessed, by and large, by and large, to have a group of people who will get into, Teddy Roosevelt said, the man in the arena. You get in the arena, you stick your neck out, you put yourself out there to be criticized, condemned, and you try to achieve something. And so I think that that is what a politician is, that's the, that's the positive aspect of politics, and I think I'm proud to call myself one, although I'm not professionally engaged in it. We don't make enough money to make this a profession, I'll tell you that right now. So transparency is of the utmost importance to restore and maintain trust in government, and that's what I advocate. Thank you.
Mr. Carlton.
Thought a lot about this question, and when someone wants to slam me, they call me a politician. You can call me anything you want, I really don't care, I've got a very thick skin, but all the preceding gentlemen, you know, spelled out quite well what a politician is. For me personally, as a commissioner, when I walk in the door, the politics ends at the door. When I walk in to the county office, it's about what's right for Franklin County. Decisions that I make aren't based on any political agenda either side. It's what's right for Franklin County. Sometimes they're aligned with my political views, sometimes they're not, back and forth, back and forth. And to me, that is the, the right thing. As Fenn said, you know, everything is so transparent now. If you want to see it, you can see it weeks later, you can see it live, you can come in person, no backroom deals, it's all right there, and I encourage anybody that's interested, show up. Fenn's there just about every meeting and asks some great questions. Think you're learning some stuff about bridges, right? So the process is alive and well, I think it's getting better, it's always room for improvement. Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert.
When they, when I leave work, they say, where are you going? I'm going politicking. So, so if you want to call it politicking, it probably is. But I'm a Mainer. Actually, my, my pepe moved from Bozville, Canada, in the early twen, in the early 1900s, and learned how to work hard, learned some French that probably I didn't even understand, but probably wasn't nice when he was telling me. But it, it made me who I am, and I'm willing to work hard, get my hands dirty, I'm someone who, who listens. Will take a while sometimes to get to that point that I need to, to move on some things, but by doing that, though, I'm, I'm learning and understanding and listening before I talk and to make a difference. And it's, it's not just for me, it's for, like I said, it's for my family, it's for this community, it's where I live, it's where I want people to enjoy, and I hope I can do that in the future for you. Thanks.
Mr. McLean.
Politics and politicians. This is the time of year that we all come together and do the politicking and politician stuff that we need to do. So let's break it down. Poly, meaning many. Tex, blood-sucking insects. So I'm not advocating that we are that way, but it does kind of break the ice with people when you start talking politics. And I think what's, what's interesting about it is, it all happens prior to an election. That's when we advocate to get, gain the votes of the various citizens that we're talking to. And if we do a good enough job, we'll get elected, and then we'll serve in the capacity of, of a commissioner negotiating, collaborating, and cooperating with the others. Politics will be all set aside at that point in time, or at least it should be. And if politics continues into that realm, then it's really not politics. It's advocacy for a right-wing or a left-wing proposal, and that's not what I am proposing to be as a, as a blood-sucking insect. Thank you.
All right. This concludes our forum. Thank you all for attending tonight. Thank you all for staying after your poise, your honesty, and your integrity. Candidates, please stick around to answer any questions. Thank you again, and have a great night.